Good evening, welcome. Pam, would you please call us to order?
The time is 5:11 PM and the Board of Trustees are now in session.
Would you please note that Mr. Exer, myself, Judge Hagerty, Ms. Nahara, and Dr. Graham are present. Ms. Robles had to leave and Ms. Solis is out of town. Welcome, welcome. It's hard to believe it's already December. I hope everyone has a wonderful break, great holidays, and a very merry, happy Christmas. With that, Dr. Gonzalez, would you mind leaving us a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.4, approval minutes, February 8th, 2017.
Judge approved.
July 26th, August 23rd, September 6th, September 13th, September 21st, October 19th, 2017.
Judge approved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nahara.
Mr. Exer.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Pam, is there anybody signed up to, under open form?
I do not have any forms collected. I don't know if there's anyone in the audience.
Is anybody here to speak under open form? No, once, twice. Okay, thank you very much. Pam?
Item 1.7, presentations by individuals, groups, and organizations. Item 1.7.1, Dr. Williams Sarata, college president, will recognize individuals who have retired from the college district.
Chair Fiero, members of the board. So I've learned that if you're in your last year, you can stop in December and it's considered a full year. And it appears that some of our retirees are utilizing this. This is always a bittersweet moment for the institution, folks that have dedicated so much of their time and their career to our institution, serving the students that we're fortunate to have be a part of the college. I'm going to start with Margie Anotico. Come on up, please, come up. Wonderful. Ms. Margie Anotico began working at the El Conquistador newspaper as a work-study in the fall of 1987, while taking classes at El Paso Community College. In spring 1989, she graduated with her associate's degree and began working part-time as a peer counselor. In 1991, Margie became a full-time lab facility, working under the PASS program, and then finally as a reading lab assistant at the Rio Grande Campus Reading Lab, where she has been performing her duties in an exemplary manner to this date. Margie helped the reading lab prosper over the years and we were extremely fortunate to work with her for so many years and so many students. Thank you so much. You will be truly missed and we wish her all the best in her well-deserved retirement. We'd love to honor you for your 25 years of exemplary service at the college.
Thank you for the years of service. Well, thank you so much. I'm very appreciative of your distractions. Thank you. Well, thank you so much for the appearances. I loved it. Thank you so much.
Ms. Janet Taylor, would you please join me? Ms. Janet Taylor began working at El Paso Community College in October 1991. She was hired as a part-time employee assisting in the phone bank with telephone registration. I remember telephone registration. In 1992, she moved to the processing department, which later changed its name to registration, as a part-time employee and then was hired as a full-time employee in January of 1994 until her retirement this month. Mrs. Taylor provided 26 years of great customer service, not just to students but to faculty and staff. Ms. Taylor not only fixed problems, but provided solutions so that processes were streamlined. Many students who have attended and graduated from El Paso Community College have been helped by Mrs. Taylor in many of the behind-the-scenes processes. Her knowledge, teaching ability, and professionalism will be missed. Janet will be retiring this December and spend more time with her husband, Henry Taylor, of 48 years. Congratulations. And her wonderful children and grandchildren. She can't wait to travel and visit them all. Thank you so much for your 26 years of service to El Paso Community College. Ms. Belinda Quinones, would you come and join me, please? So Ms. Quinones surprised me as I was preparing for today's meeting and saw her. She didn't even let me know she was leaving. Our admissions and registration assistant. Ms. Quinones began her career at El Paso Community College in December 1985 as an administrative assistant with the Women's Center. Once the center closed, she worked at various offices across campuses such as counseling, recruitment, student leadership, and campus life office, and as a supervisor for the intake office. In the spring of 2003, Ms. Quinones moved to the admissions and registration office. During her tenure at El Paso Community College, Ms. Quinones served as a TFA support staff president, recording secretary for the district, IE, and numerous committees. In November 2014, she was honored as Trans Mountain Employee of the Month. She also served several times as Classified Staff President. In fact, you're serving now as Classified Staff President. She committed 32 years to service and to the students here at El Paso Community College. She was one of the individuals that always went beyond the call of duty and would guarantee that a student and staff member were always served to full capacity. If she didn't know the answer, she would go and find the answer. You will be truly missed, not just in the admissions and registration office, but especially at her campus at Trans Mountain. She is looking forward to retirement so that she may spend more time with her children and grandchildren. She looks forward to enjoying those special moments in life. Thank you so much for 32 years of service. Last and certainly not least, and the most difficult for me personally, given the proximity and how close over the last five-plus years, Ms. Angelica Sano, would you please come up and join me? Angelica serves as Special Projects Assistant in our office. Angelica Sano is retiring after 35 years at El Paso Community College. She began her career at EPCC in the fall of 1981, soon after graduating from Fort Hancock High School. She started EPCC as a full-time student and work-study for about a year and a half until 1983, when she was selected to work as a secretary for the Office of the Vice President of Instructional and Student Affairs. Opportunities to grow and learn from the other departments within the college soon follow, which led to her upward mobility towards her professional journey at EPCC, including secretary for the Developmental Education Department, senior secretary for the Department of Business and Industry Development Center, program assistant for the Alpha Center, administrative secretary for the executive dean of the Trans Mountain campus, senior administrative associate for the Office of Vice President of Instruction, and lastly, being able to retire as Special Projects Assistant for the Office of the President. During her tenure at EPCC, Angelica also served in a number of committees, including her appointment to serve as one of the first committee members of the Leadership Academy Committee, which she continued to serve in this capacity for five years. Most recently, Angelica was appointed as the liaison of the Office of the President to actively coordinate the partnership of the five EPCC-adopted elementary school adoption programs and oversee the kickoff event ceremonies recognizing the elementary schools, respective of their district as the EPCC's college-bound schools. And the events have been done fantastically. Such events would not have been successful and seamless without the support of the amazing and hard-working students representing the STS Lab, the Office of Recruitment and College Readiness. Their eagerness and enthusiasm to serve was contagious and instrumental in the success of these events, but Angelica was our point person from our office to lead those. She's a proud graduate of El Paso Community College and feels honored to have been a member of a top-ranked college in the nation during her tenure at EPCC. She credits her career and success at EPCC to the support, confidence, and encouragement, first and foremost, of her husband, Ed, of 29 years. And Mr. Sano is here as her daughter Erica, who is also a past EPCC graduate and now proudly serving as a state trooper. I asked her to look the other way as I drive through the Van Horn area. Her daughter Alexis, who is a senior at UTEP, and her son Eduardo, who will be graduating from high school at the end of this academic year and looking forward to pursuing his higher education. And of course, she cannot forget to also thank the faculty, staff, and administrators at this great institution, who gave her the opportunity to serve the college and community alongside throughout the many years. Her time spent once she retires will be devoted to the people and things she loves most: her husband, children, parents, her church, and is in the works of pursuing a certification in religious theology to continue serving her church. And if time allows, would like to devote her time to her hobbies of photography and astronomy and maybe even learn to play piano one day. That's wonderful. This is Angelica's quote. "I'm grateful and humbled for the opportunity. I've served as a member of this amazing institution for more than 35 years and proud to have been a member of an institution that has merited and earned not only statewide but national recognition of excellence due to the passion, commitment, and vision," that's sweet, "of our college president and I'd say of all the college and the board as well, the support of the Board of Trustees. I've worked alongside excellent colleagues throughout and given many opportunities to grow and develop, not only professionally but personally. However, I cannot come to this point and not recognize the people in departments who quietly work tirelessly behind the scenes and at times going far and above their call of duty to allow us all to provide the best service to our students and community. The Physical Plant Department, distributional services, janitorial services, media, IT, purchasing accounts payable, payroll, human resources, and of course, the Police Department for keeping us safe, and all the departments that make up the EPCC family. EPCC is and always will be a place I am proud to call home, home away from home, and will always hold a special place in my heart. Godspeed to all." Thank you, Angelica, who has served us for 35 years and who has agreed at my insistence if she would be willing to come back part-time after a period of time away from the institution. I'm still hoping she agrees to that. Angelica, thank you so much for 35 years of excellent service. And her entire family is here. I want to thank all of the Sanos for being here. Mr. Sano and her children are here. Your mom talks about you all the time. She's very proud as she should be.
Item 1.7.2, Dr. Sylvia Acosta, CEO, YWCA, El Paso, the Northeast Region, will make a presentation on the use of pilot funds to pay for childcare services for children of EPC students at the YWCA Early Learning Centers.
Good evening, Dr. Acosta, welcome.
Hi.
Merry Christmas, it's great to see you.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays. I'm sorry, I'm running around. If you can tell, we have early childhood education, Christmas programs, and holiday programs going out throughout the city, so I'm just running around. So thank you so much for allowing me to be here today. I really appreciate it. I have a really short presentation because you all have a very, very busy, busy schedule. And so as a former professor, you all probably know that I like to talk. So I'm going to try to keep it short. So let me just begin. I don't know what I do here. Do I just press this? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're with the YWCA. You know where the W makes a difference. That's why we have these kids making a W. As I've stated before, we have nine early learning academies, two of them which are at EPCC, which we love, at Trans Mountain and at Valle Verde. I want to tell you, last year's, and what I'm reporting on is on last year's pilot funds and how we utilize them. So in 2017, we got $29,695 in pilot funds that we were, and that's the money that I'm reporting on, that we utilized to support the families and the students at EPCC. We've talked about, this is not EPCC's fault, this is what's happening with HUD and with the Housing Authority. And so I wanted to let you know how we used your funds last year. And we use it, as I stated previously, we provide support for your students to attend school and to have childcare while they're attending school. Our goal is to eliminate barriers for their success. So for those children that were not paid through Perkins Grant, we used the pilot funds to support them. We used it partially. What I'm reporting is through, and this will make it a little bit clearer. I'm reporting through August 2017. And if you notice at the bottom, there's a balance, $4,270. And let me tell you why. Because if you see, we ended August 2017. We had to, and if you look at what happens in the summer is we don't provide any support because we don't get, we don't get these dollars. Like right now, we're getting them in January. And if we don't save that money, we will not have any money to provide scholarships for students when they start in the fall. So what we try to do is save the money in the spring, hold it off in the summer. So when the academic year comes in, and that's one of the biggest challenges, is that the kids come in, the students come in, and they don't have any support for childcare. So we support them through our funds. We have the We Care Scholarship. But we also save some of the money over the summer and partially so that we can have some dollars to support them in the fall. So that's where you see that balance. That's the money that we utilized from August through December. And when this, when these dollars hopefully come in and you agree to provide us that funding, which we'll be very grateful for, we'll utilize that money again for the spring. And then we'll stop in the summer because we're going to need to save that in case, depending on when it is that we're going to be allotted the money. So that's what we're doing with the money. I don't know if you have any questions?
Dr. Sarata, it's with the new summer Pell, we're going to have an increase in students. Has anyone had the opportunity to look at, if there's any way we can help fund some of those summer students?
Sure. So what we're looking at, we're, for the YWCA, the college is a pass-through. So funds that are provided, and what we've seen over time, the Perkins funds were reduced dramatically approximately a decade ago. The federal government chose to change the distribution of Perkins dollars and approximately 90% of Perkins dollars goes to K through 12 now. It was a higher percentage that used to come to higher ed. And so we have seen across all institutions of higher ed, as Perkins funds gets reduced, this is, again, the reason that we see this continuing to lower. We, as an institution, have not lowered any of the resources that we directly provide. What we've done, what has occurred is the pass-through dollars that come through the institution have been dramatically decreased. We believe in the program. It's one that we continue to believe in. Childcare is vastly important. I was explaining to Dr. Acosta before the meeting began, just got a quote on the cost to modify the other portable so that we can move that over. It's not a cost that is exorbitant, so we will move forward with that to allow additional space at the Trans Mountain campus for additional students. But we will continue to explore any and all possibilities. I know that Ms. Mo and the Foundation, we're looking at all types of possibilities of being able to partner with Dr. Acosta on the possibility of increasing funds that are available for the students that vastly and very much need this important service.
And I understand how, why they're saving the monies from the summer, but with the Summer's Pell Grant, we're hoping for an increase in enrollment.
There's one other way. So Perkins is allocated also based on the number of CTE students that are declared CTE majors, Career and Technology. What the Board is doing with the master plan and the addition of roughly 30, a third of the 400,000 square feet we're adding to the institution are considered CTE programs. The more CTE students we have, the more eligible we are for Perkins funding.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Sarata.
And also, just to let you know that we have our own foundation at the YWCA. So for those students that can't afford childcare, we also provide them a scholarship from our funding because we can't allow these students not to have childcare. It's something that they're desperate for. So we do pick up some of that on our end as well.
Appreciate it.
I have a question, sir.
Yes.
On, Dr. Acosta, on the money that was awarded at the last and most recent Texas Workforce Conference at the end of November, beginning of December, did any of that money come to the Y? I mean, because El Paso was well-represented. I don't know if you had anybody from your agency there?
So we received money from the Workforce Board. And the way we utilize that money is, the big challenge is that many of our students, many of your students qualify for subsidized childcare through CCS. However, CCS is closed and they don't reopen it. So they close it and they open it very regularly. So before, if a person had CCS, after three months and they hadn't really utilized the service, we could transfer that to somebody else. What's happened now is that they've reduced the amount of money that the state is providing through workforce and it's state funds that are coming through the federal government. And so if a student is, a student or an individual qualifies for childcare services, which is, which are individuals at a lower income, then we will qualify for them and put them on the waitlist. Now, the waitlist, they are not high on the waitlist. On the waitlist are homeless children, they get priority, veterans get priority. So there's a way that they qualify for that. And students are really not at the top of that priority list. So even if we get money and even if we do have more childcare services dollars, chances are that those are closed and your students are not eligible for that money. That's where our We Care funding comes in, that we have for our scholarships. We will give scholarships to individuals or families that make a salary under $27,000 so that they can afford to have childcare. So we subsidize that because we just have run into some big challenges with the state in that...
Yeah, but you're talking about regular distribution of funds. I'm speaking specifically about the funds that were given out to exemplary programs that competed. And there were several throughout the state that received a good chunk of money. So maybe you might want to take a look at that under the Texas Workforce because they were, I know that I saw a couple of people here from EPCC that attended that conference and we were all surprised that quite a big chunk of money was awarded for childcare.
I will look to see, it may be, it may be that we were not eligible. I need to figure out how, it may be because we already get certain amount of dollars and we do have the pass-through for most of the dollars in the community that we may not have qualified, but I will find out and get back to you.
Yeah, it's rewarding exemplary practices and partnerships. And you have the partnerships.
We do.
But you have to apply, you know, submit to be considered for those dollars.
Let me, I will email you and I'll get back to you on that, on whether or not we were able to get some of those funds because I don't see that we received any of those funds. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Acosta. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
No?
And as always, we thank you so much for your partnership with us and we thank you for these pilot funds. They mean the world to us. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Chair, items 1.73 and 1.76 are being postponed to a future month. So item 1.7.4, Ms. Olga Chavez, Director, Diversity Programs, will present the college district with a National 2017 Higher Education Excellence in Diversity HEAT Award.
Good evening, Ms. Chavez, welcome.
Good evening. First of all, I wanted to wish each and every one of you a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and a bright New Year. Thank you very much for allowing me to present this HEAT Award. First of all, let me just read a little bit. I think we're doing the HEAT Award first, so we'll wait for the, is that correct? The HEAT Award, based on the Insights Magazine, the Insights into Diversity created the HEAT Award to annually recognize institutions that meaningfully strive to be leaders in the higher education, diversity, and inclusion arena. Every institution that receives the HEAT Award has applied a strategic diversity leadership approach to advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts at their institution. The application process considers an institution level of achievement and intensity of commitment to broadening diversity and inclusion on its campus through strategic initiative, programs, and outreach, student recruitment, retention, and completion, and hiring practices for faculty and staff. As you know, we have received this award four years past and we're very happy to announce again that we have received it for the fifth year. So what we'd like to do, Michelle Chavez, who is part of the Diversity Programs, and myself, would like to invite you, Dr. Sarata and Mr. Fiero, to please come down and represent the Board as we'd like to present this award to the institution. Okay, I'd like to, again, thank the Board. I'd like to, again, thank the Board for allowing, I know that Mr. Fierro had requested for us to give some highlights on Hispanic Heritage Month. Again, we continue to be very proud of our efforts that we had this year, but I also want to recognize that we do provide a lot of other events of which that's why, and the college provides a lot of events of, and the very reason why we received our HEAT Award. I'd like to thank the members of our Hispanic Heritage Committee, some of which are here, but it consisted of faculty, staff, and students, and our sponsors that helped us out this year. Also, I'd like to mention that the libraries were very much involved in our efforts and they had displays in all of the campuses. We had student, our focus, one of our main focuses this year was to continue to highlight our students and to utilize our students because of their expertise and so that they also can get some experience. So this year, we continued to use the mass communication students who did a lot of our videos and put some scripts together, our music staff and our students who provided the music, and our art students and our art faculty who provided the art displays. So with that being said, the event started and our title was Honoring Our Heritage, Building Our Future. We started with a resolution at the county, at the county, and you see our photos there receiving our resolution. We had a proclamation. We went to the city and we were able to get our city proclamation as we have other years. Next. And we started, as you know, with the Rio Grande kickoff. As you know, we start that every year. We've done that for 16 years now, and so Rio Grande is very proud to put this event on. And you'll see a whole list of events that happened that day. Next, please. And we have pictures to prove. We have the musicians, we have part of our committee members. We want to thank Martha Brown and Lee Vazquez for heading the Rio Grande event, and of course, Dr. Sarata for being there to welcome our people. Next. Here's a few more events. Our musicians on the left side from, from the music faculty. Ms. Shauna See, her support in helping us bring this to fruition every year. Next. We moved on to the Read-Ins, and the Read-Ins consisted, if you see, we got a lot of faculty support, and this was from Northwest, Rio Grande, Trans Mountain, Villa Verde, and Mission. And faculty members took upon themselves to spearhead it. And again, the Read-Ins means that we have faculty, students, and staff who are interested to read their poetry, their stories, read an article relevant to our theme. Again, here was the Rio Grande, Jorge Gomez, who spearheaded the Rio Grande campus. Next. Trans Mountain, we had Rebecca Bell. That did that. Next. I do want to say that we have other members, that we didn't have photo, photos that did help us with the Read-Ins, and again, we want to thank them very much for all their, their help. It was Kathleen Bomback, Rebecca Bell, Reyna Munoz, and Jorge Gomez. The student presentation, this is the first time we've ever done this, and I wanted to thank Mr. Quinones for agreeing to do this, going on campus, not only doing the Mentors' Dinner, but going on campus and, and speaking to the students one-on-one. And he was very gracious, as you'll see in their picture. We had a good turnout outside of the architectural building. Thank you, Dr. Amaya, for letting us use those surroundings, and we were able to have a very, very, very good event at Villa Verde. Next, we moved on to just a highlight of Mr. Quinones and all the events that we had for that Hispanic Heritage. The Mentors' Dinner, I want to thank each and every one of you for attending the Mentors' Dinner, our cabinet as well. I think that is the biggest support from our administration that we've had, and I really do appreciate those in the audience, those that are hearing this. It meant a lot to me, to our committee, and certainly to Mr. Quinones, to see such representation from our college and our community. Next. And here we started with a press conference. On the right-hand side, you'll see that our students from our newspaper and our mass communications were able to talk to him one-on-one, and then we had some news media that would come and talk to him one-on-one as well. Very gracious on that. Next. We also were able to highlight our mentors, and this in particular was Linda Rivas. Next. And then we started our dinner, and as you can see, we started with a bang, right? We had the Marimba that really got us moving, and we got Mr. Quinones involved. We got Carla Mariscal from Telemundo to just bring in the festivities, and many of our board members and our faculty and staff were included in there, so it was a nice way to start. Next. And Mr. Quinones, if you heard him, he certainly is a motivational speaker, very humble and very charismatic, so he gave a presentation of about 30 minutes to an audience of close to 300. Next. We, this is the first time we've had this, and what we did is we asked the city to see if they would provide the key to the city and the greater chamber to have a star for that evening. So after the event, we went and showed Mr. Quinones what that meant to have the star, and he was real excited about that and the key to the city. He said, "Please send it to me before they change the key." So he was excited about that, and so that, that was an extra portion to our event this year. Our scholarship recipients, as you can see, we had two scholarship recipients, Andrea Porras Portillo, she's our SGA, she might be in the audience, we're very proud of her, and Alejandra Flores. They were our recipients, received a $1,000 scholarship each. And last but not least, our mentors, Linda Rivas, Executive Director, Attorney, Las Americas Immigrant Advocacy Center, and of course, Dr. Jose Luna, who is in San Vicente, who are, were this year's mentors. The art exhibit, as I mentioned, we had Marco and we had, excuse me, that, I always forget his last name, I apologize, but he is our art instructor. He's up on the right-hand side, and he did outstanding work. He brings the students involved, they put their artwork there, and, and so he brought students, got them involved, along with Ronnie Dukes, our other artist, Marco Santos, I'm sorry, Marco. Next. Some more artwork that was on display. He had a little reception prior to that. Next. Here are all the committee members, and I'm sure there are others, committee members who are not, that have helped out in the different campuses. We couldn't do it without any, any of these people. I want to personally thank them for all their time and attention and support, and they don't get paid, they just come to help, and I appreciate that. And next. Last but not least, our sponsors. They continue to help us, support us, encourage us, and they'll keep helping us as long as we are able to keep doing this. So that is our event. Mr. Fierro and board members and president, that we, we thank you for your efforts in, in allowing us to bring forth another diversity Hispanic Heritage event.
Ms. Chavez, thank you. Your team, your volunteers, your Board were gracious, and, and you could not beat Mr. Quinones on how he was, he had time for each and every person in that room, and obviously for each and every of the students also. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ms. Chavez, I think you need to take your...
Committee to see the movie Coco.
Ah, okay, we will.
You get new ideas.
Okay, thank you.
Item 1.7.7, Mr. Felix Inahosa, Athletic Director, will be providing an update to the Board of Trustees on the recent accomplishments of the EPCC athletic teams.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I have some handouts for a quiz.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Coach, was the men's team missing, or?
They're studying.
Oh.
They're studying. First of all, thank you very much for allowing me to present the, some of the student athletes that we have. Along with that, we have the Women's Cross Country Team, who has a GPA of 3.29, and the Women's Half Marathon Team with a GPA of 3.74. So from one team, we take the other team and we go to Nationals. This year was a very, a decent year for Nationals and Conference. The ladies repeated the conference title for the fifth year in a row, which means right now we have the, I guess, the standing record with a two-time repeating individual champion of Chalet Mette. She's also a nursing major and has a GPA of 3.92. So it's very important to understand that our student athletes are really majoring in what I call marketable degrees, other than the two that decided to go into kinesiology, which I'm really trying to ask them to go somewhere else.
No, we need them, sir. We need kinesiology people.
Oh, we need kinesiology people, so that's good. We have biology, chemistry, nursing, and so on and so forth. GPAs ranging from four to three, as you can see, and we also have graduation dates. There has to be a completion. You have to come here, you have to graduate, and then we have to go to the next level to graduate. I have four people that are getting their bachelor's that are graduating from UTEP. So it doesn't just end with an associate, it has to go all the way to hopefully a master's or hopefully a PhD.
That's great.
The reason we go high on the GPAs is because it opens up more doors, especially financial doors. An athletic scholarship is great, an academic scholarship even better. We like to chase the complete prism, NJCAA Academic All-American and an NJCAA Athletic All-American. We chase perfection, but we'll tolerate excellence. With that said, I have Ocean Stevens. Ocean, raise your hand. All right, Ocean is going to New Mexico. She graduated in December. Marari Valenzuela, here, 4.0. Probably go to UTEP. She's still deciding. Chalet, nursing. We met Chalet. She's going to, she's looking at Florida and she's looking at other places in Texas. Amy could not be here, but Amy is a freshman, and so we expect to have her graduate in 2019. Hopefully, we can get that GPA to 4.0. Celeste is also a freshman in biology. She's a 325, she'll go 219. Samantha is also a freshman. Samantha? Amy? And then we have Michelle, here, going to nursing with a 3.0. Now, all this just doesn't happen by magic. We need a lot of resources, and some of the resources that I really count on are, one, my assistant coach, Coach Bonilla. And also, a graduate assistant that we have is Kayla Payares, who also ran for us and then ran for UTEP, and is going to graduate from UTEP, correct? Thank you. So I'm expecting that invitation. The half marathon team took second. We did run it without our, one of our top runners due to a health concern, but it's very important to understand that in, especially in, in the athletic program that we run, that we do not run injured athletes. We run healthy people, and we make sure that they understand that there's no difference between training and studying. It's the same thing. Excellence is excellence. Thank you very much for allowing me to present these wonderful athletes.
Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Mr. Inahosa. Well done, as usual. Thank you so much.
I have a question, sir. Coach, how do you go about recruiting this awesome talent? Because I see that you're going to lose quite a few to graduation.
Well, what we do, we have a philosophy of not rebuilding, but just reloading. I think that El Paso is loaded with talent. And so what I do is I have what I call our number one recruiter, which is Coach Bonilla. If you can, come up here, Coach. Now, he's a lot smoother than I am, all right? So, so you got, you got the looks, you got everything, we get him going, we go to all his goals, and then I just, you know, I'm the other side of the coin, but we start off recruiting El Paso, Socorro, Clint, and then from there, we spiral out. And we document everybody we talk to. We ask them, "Hey, come to El Paso Community College. You will, you will graduate." Right now, we have, I believe, a 90, a 98.7% graduation rate for cross-country. We're moving up as an athletic department. I think we're going to crack 80% this semester. And so, and so we're moving forward, especially with GPAs. We're instituting the third-year program of the GPA, which is now to participate in athletics, you need to have a minimum of a 3.0.
That's great.
All right, with cross-country, a minimum of a 3.5. And it's just, if we raise the bar, they'll, they'll go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Item 1.7.8, optional presentations will be made by the Presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
Greetings, Mr. Fierro, board members, Dr. Sarata, and attendees. I'm Leti Serranda, President of the Professional Staff Association at El Paso Community College. PSA would like to take this opportunity to reflect on this last, this ending year's accomplishments. Fundraising activity for student and employee relief have been included throughout the year, and we have been selling VIP cards district-wide. We have also had a craft fair in October to generate monies for employee relief funds and for students' activities as well as their educational scholarships. We have dispersed six student scholarships during this year. We have donated blankets to the El Paso Sheriff. We have also had new committee chair people that I would like to name, they're not here, but they're, I would like to give them some kudos for being, stepping up to the plate. We have Mari Reyes, Grace Erivas, Arlene Alarcón, Mary Olgin-Chavez. These are individuals that help and have extended their assistance for PSA, and I really want to thank them for doing that. We have some chair people that have already completed their service with us, and we would like to give them some kudos next, at the next presentation. We want to continue our momentum for the upcoming year. We are planning to be part of the next year's Employees Professional Day session. We are, we are also working with Mr. Peña from the Human Resource and developing a good working report for next year. He's done an excellent job. He's met with us. Thank you, Mr. Peña. We would like to thank Dr. Sarata for his support and the administrators as well, Dean Webb, our liaison. We would like to thank you for being so encouraging during this year, and we look forward to concluding next year. In conclusion for this presentation, I would like to wish you a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, be safe, and we want to see you next year, and I'll be back.
Thank you so much. Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas.
Good evening. I'm always the one who messes with your microphone, sorry. Well, happy holidays. On behalf of the Faculty Association, tonight, we did want to continue our effort to answer Dr. Graham's question about how we are using the resources that you're providing for us to accomplish student success. And before I get started, I do also want to go ahead and mention that I serve on the State Board for the... state board for the Texas Faculty Association, and one of my honors is to travel the state and brag on our administration and the relationship that faculty have with our administration. From our deans to our AVPs, to of course, our Vice President of Instruction and Dr. Serrata himself, our administration works very hard to have conversations with us, to listen to us, and to hear our proposals, and we are very grateful for the work that has been done. Now, that said, I think that we should also be cautiously aware of the national data that is indicating and has been building since 2010, that there is a direct line to be drawn between the resources that we provide to adjunct faculty and the completion and retention rates of our students. And to that end, I've asked my Vice President of Adjuncts, Ms. Melissa Aguilera, who is also a 2017 NISOD for Teaching Excellence Award winner, to come and talk to you about the resources that we provide to adjuncts and the work that's being done with those.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Yes, I had the opportunity to sit next to Dr. Fierro. It was very nice to sit next to him during that award. So greetings to President Serrata, members of the Board, and Vice Presidents. I am Melissa Aguilera. I'm the Faculty Vice President for Part-Time Instructors and also known as adjuncts. Today, I would like to present some of the great work your part-time faculty does. I look forward to your commitment to helping them be effective for students so our students are successful. Let me start by pointing out the college has done more for the part-time faculty than most institutions. Let me, why, we now have more than one day off for sick leave. We are working toward adjuncts being included in opportunities previously only given to full-time faculty. For example, the ability for adjunct achievement award winners to attend the National Institute for Staff and Organizational Development, or NISOD, as I did attend this last year. Not only that, but some institutions do not even allow their part-time faculty to participate in Faculty Senate, if you didn't know that as well. I had had conversations with the Austin community colleges, and they actually have a separate adjunct faculty from their Faculty Association. So with all that, Rebecca Bell, Rudy Hernandez, Celeste Favela, and I have been working on the steps we can take to improve the well-being of the members of the college. Currently, we're in talks to offer more specific detailed development that would allow instructors to be more effective. If you notice on your screen right here, these are both from, well, this one here is from the ACE, which is looking at the progression of student learning based, starting with faculty. And your faculty is your asset that you should be pouring your funds into. If you look at this one here as well, this is the loop of net revenue and student outcomes. If, both of these are current studies that are happening, well, have not happened yet, but are continuing through the ACE. So if we are aware, our part-time, if you're not aware, your part-time faculty include, make a path of our institution's faculty, and the largest population of them are housed at the Vaivert Campus. These instructors often give their all to the college as part-timers, but are compensated less than their full-time counterparts. They will have to work other part-time positions in order to keep doing what they love, and that is teaching in this community. The path to part-time instructor to full-time is not always clear and can be daunting at times. I hope, the hope that for some part-time instructors to become full-time with the love of providing that to this institution. As I mentioned, it's important, it is an important facet for student success is a well-developed faculty member, and that includes part-time instructors as well. I look forward to our continued work toward making EPCC truly the best place to start and finish, if there are questions.
Any questions, Dr. Graham? Do you have a question? You mentioned, and I mean, Dr. Serrata can follow up on this with us later, that the path from adjunct to full-time was...
It's not always clear. Mostly, as adjuncts, we're offered several opportunities to be involved with some of the developmental and other things, development things that we receive some training, but it's not always required. So occasionally, an adjunct would say, well, I don't, I only have to attend one, or I only have to attend this many to meet my required, when really, in reality, they should be participating in committees, they should be involved in other campus activities. I've been involved at the college for the last six years myself, but that doesn't mean everybody gets involved, and they're not exactly told that either. So when that's sort of like, well, how do I become full-time? That becomes a question.
Great. Thank you very much. Very interesting. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Chair Fierro, President Serrata, members of the Board, for having us here today and for allowing us to speak. I do have a presentation. I'm gonna try to make it short and sweet, but it's just a little bit about the accomplishments and things that we've done this semester. So one of the first things, the things that we're most proud of is the Boosting Houston Hurricane Relief Drive. We got together an 18-wheeler. We put together a lot of donations from the community, from the members of the college, and the purpose was to aid communities affected by Hurricane Harvey. It was a collaborative effort, like I mentioned. In the top picture, we see the cheerleaders. We also had help from the student ambassadors, as well as members of other clubs and organizations from the college and the people in the community. And we had a lot of media coverage. We were, we came out in Telemundo, we came out in Channel 7, I think. So it was a great event that we did, and it was a lot of work, but we're really proud of it. Another thing is we had the region conferences here. It was at Odessa College. We are president school for the region. We should be going back to Odessa in February for the second meeting of the year. And we actually came up with that logo. It is now our new region logo, so we're also really proud of that. Another thing is we went to the, ah, we went to the American Student Government Association Conference, or ASGA, in Washington, DC. It was honestly one of the best experiences I've had, being in student government. We got to meet with Senator Ted Cruz. He is in the bottom, the top left, the left picture. We met with Congressman O'Rourke. He's in the far left, yes. And then we visited the Capitol, a lot of different monuments in Washington. We saw the Supreme Court, among other places. At the conference, it was a really great experience to improve upon our leadership skills. We got to network with students from all over the United States, and I would definitely recommend it, do it all over again. Another event that we're very proud of is the Know Your Rights Forum. The purpose of the event was to inform students about the effects of DACA and the repeal of DACA and the adoption of, well, the passing of this before. It's still in the, in the works, but we, we had a collaboration with faculty, Las Americas Immigration Advocacy Center, and we also had DACA recipients speak at the event. It was a very well-attended event, and we had a lot of media coverage as well, so it was really exciting. We also, as student government, had the opportunity to have a table for voter registration, and we're always trying to do more to register people in our community to vote. The next thing that we did was the Fall Festival. This was October 31st, and as you know, some of you might have been there. It was really, really successful this year. We had a lot of people, even in spite of the fact that we didn't have carnival rights. We had some comments about people not being very pleased about not having carnival rights, but it was just because of the insurance and all these different things. But we're working for next year to have them. In total, we raised $11,460. This is through the sales of tickets, the sales of the wristbands, food, et cetera. There were 37 clubs in attendance. In the top three clubs, I just want to recognize them. The top club is Culinary. They made $896. I don't know if you were there, they were selling turkey legs. They were delicious, to say the least. The second earning group was a sign language club with 587, and cheer, 577. As student government, we voted on doubling the club's earnings. So every single club that attended the SOC meeting that month, we doubled their earnings. So if they made $100, we matched it and we doubled it. So they got $300 altogether. And yeah, every, every year, it gets bigger and bigger, and hopefully, we're able, yes, sir.
Let me ask you a question before you move on to the next subject. A total raise was $11,460.
Yes.
How does that compare to last year when you had the carnival rights?
I'm not entirely sure. I don't have that information, but I will be able to bring in next.
But there was a difference?
Yes.
The only reason I'm asking is, I'm wondering, the difference covered the liability insurance and with all the bad press that, and unfortunate accidents have happened. It's something that I think Mr. Gallardo should look into from our end before we move further for next year.
I'm not entirely sure about the difference. I think this, we earned more this year, but it was, this was just on, on sales of the tickets and the wristbands and food. I think it's just that the club stepped up their game. We did have a little bit of a problem. We do sell tickets that are a different color, and they're all like, they, we stamped them at the back so that they're unique to us. But some people in the community went and bought tickets, like rolls of tickets that were a different color, and they were giving it to the club. So we would have made a little bit more money, but you know, there is, there's always that person. We're working on it. We're working on, on EPCC Fall Festival tickets.
Oh, good.
That will be specific to the event. But yeah, I'll let you know more about the difference next board meeting.
Thank you.
Moving on, we had the Leader B1 Conference. This was, again, this was the biggest conference that we've had. We had 99 students in attendance, and it gives clubs and organizations, specifically the president and, and usually one more club member, the opportunity to network and improve their leadership skills. But this, I mean, this conference is open to every student and some members of the community as well. We invited UTEP. I think only one UTEP member came, but it was still really great, and like I said, it gets bigger and bigger every year. Some of the things that we offered at the conference were workshops, and we also had motivational speakers along with like yoga exercises to relax. And this is a picture at the end of the conference with everyone with their, with their Leader B1 shirts. Another thing is the Tejana Food Pantry. This year, we've been, we've collected approximately 9,000 items from donations from the community and students, especially around the time of finals. We appreciate every single faculty member that's been giving their students extra credit to bring donations, because we got so many. We were so packed. This year, we were able to, we received 15 turkeys. They were donated from a community member, and so we put together 15 holiday boxes that had cranberry sauce. Yeah, they had cranberry sauce, they had corn and green beans, and a lot of different things that you might need during the holidays, and a turkey. And we gave it to some students that had requested boxes throughout the year as like a thank you and good luck. We have helped more than 32 students, some three to four times, depending on the need. And like I said, we're growing more and more every year, like everything that we've been doing as a student government, and we're really excited to see where this is moving towards. I think there was a question last board meeting about whether we are looking at moving to other places, to other campuses, and we're still looking at that. We just don't have the place to store food or the, the, what's it called? The manpower to supply it and to work it. But we're looking to overcome those, those obstacles. And finally, this is to address one of the questions that was brought up last board meeting. Mr. Uxer asked us about how we fund our trips. So this is just kind of a bit of a very simplified breakdown of what student government does and what we fund. The beginning balance this year was $667,000, and this comes from student fees, $5 for every student and $1 for every course, credit hour that they take. And since this year, this year, we had less students, we had a smaller budget. But we fund 17 full-time and part-time positions through student leadership and campus life. For classified staff, we have allocated $195,000, and for class, for intramural sports, we have done $37,000, sorry. We have $25,000 allocated specifically for book loans, and it seems that we're going to have to allocate more money next semester because students, as they become more aware about the programs and resources that we give and we have, the more they use it. So another thing that we have is $10,000 for scholarships. Again, we're looking at increasing this fund, and we're looking at adding another little bit of money to help students pay for their, help students pay for their application fees when they move on, in case they want to apply places other than UTEP. For example, the UT Austin application is $75, if I'm not mistaken. So we want to help students relieve that, that cost for them so that we can push them to, you know, pursue higher goals. Another thing is we have, we allocate $40,000 for the Student Organizational Council. This is for the student clubs and organizations. They can come to us and request money for conferences, or if they're going on trips, or if they're doing a fundraiser, they can come to us and request money up to $2,500. The way we divide it is we give some money during the fall, some for the spring, and some for the summer. And then, yes, so, so the money that we doubled for the, for the Fall Festival came out of the, came out of the funds for the semester. Another thing that we do is we pay for the banquet and graduation, $17,000, and we also fund intramurals and cheer, $80,000. A lot of people don't know that we do these things. That's why I kind of wanted to bring it up, to let you all know where our money goes, what we do with our budget. And we only use $35,000 to travel. We're very selective with the trips that we take and the people that we take, and we try to make sure that every single trip that we take is an educational opportunity and a networking opportunity for every single one of us. And at the end of the year, because this is for the whole year, at the end of the year, whatever is not used rolls over, but we usually put it in a different account to fund our student unions, since we do support those 100%. The next thing is to answer the question that Dr. Graham asked us last year, I mean, last meeting, some recommendations of what we, what we, as student government, would recommend to improve EPCC or to improve the, the retention.
Recruitment.
Yes, recruitment, yes. So a few things that I asked the student government and a few things that they could think about was the aesthetics of the campuses. Some things that we have gotten from fellow students is that they feel that some of the colleges campuses look like high schools, and so I think that, and the example I included on there was the EPCC logo on bus stops. I don't know if you've been to the Vaivert Campus lately, but it's very worn out, and it kind of doesn't make us look very good. We have potholes, and we need to repaint our parking lots. And I know those are things that we're working on, but I just wanted to bring them to your attention as far as things that we can do better to improve our aesthetics. Another thing is signage and directional signs. If you go to UTEP, every single directional sign has a UTEP logo, has the UTEP colors, and they find different and creative ways to, to post signage and to give direction to students, and I think that we can definitely do better. Another thing is the branding of our colors and our mascot. We're working with marketing on the purple and teal day to just tell students about our colors and to just promote pride in EPCC. I know that is something that we're kind of lacking, that we're working on as a student government, to try to get students to be proud of being part of the EPCC community, and to also brand the TJ, TJ and the mustache since they are, well, TJ is our mascot, and we're just picking the mustaches, like the biggest, what's it called? Yeah, like the biggest thing that you see when you see TJ. TJ and the cheerleaders are our biggest ambassadors. They go out to all the elementary schools. TJ is in all of our advertising, but I think we can definitely do better and find more creative, creative ways to do that. Another thing that we recommend is to improve our social media presence. If you compare other local universities, like Southwest University and UTEP, we see a very big difference, not only in how many students follow the pages as far as Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, but also in like, in the image. At EPCC, we share a lot of like EPCC logos. I didn't include a picture because I wasn't able to download it, but we, I feel like there's not so much a need to like spend more money on advertising. We can just do it differently. And just improving our media presence through advertisement, just be more creative. Um, and just improving our media presence through advertisement, just be more creative and be a little bit more youthful about the way that we present EPCC. Um, I, I added there, we're a new generation in a new market. I, I'm not even a millennial anymore. I was born in nineteen ninety-seven. Um, my sister who will be graduating next academic school year was born in two thousand and one. So there's, um, a very, very young generation that we're trying to appeal and we're the generation of technology. Well, I don't know about FCC. Did you guys see about that?
Yeah.
Um, we're the generation of technology. It seems that we're born with smartphones in our hands. And I really do want to emphasize that if we do want to attract more students, we need to be more youthful or think more youthful in the way we present our services and our college to them. And I also added the website twice. Uh, I added the website on there because it seems that, I think in our opinion, um, it just needs to be a little bit more attractive and more user-friendly. Cause, um, it's kind of hard to, to navigate even as a, an experienced student. So I feel like it should be easier to navigate as an, as an incoming student. Um.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yes, ma'am. Of course.
Since you're the new generation with technology.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do you guys as an organization, uh, tweet the activities that you get engaged with? Cause I look for them and I don't see them.
We try, but the thing is we don't have enough manpower. A lot of times we are, we have, we don't have enough, um, students in student government. So sometimes when there's a lot of events, we're all separated and it's hard to, you know, um, advertise. But we are working.
Just takes you a second and wherever you're standing, like the one, the pictures you have of the, uh, you know, trailer that you were filling with things for the hurricane victims. Was that tweeted out?
It was, we don't have a Twitter. We have a Facebook and we have an Instagram. Um, we are working on increasing our following. But like I said, we don't have a lot of manpower and we, since we take a lot of classes oftentimes, uh, we don't, um, we can't always do that. And, well, I can't always do that since I'm the only person that, well, not the only person, but I'm pretty much the only person that posts on Facebook and Instagram. So I don't have the time and sometimes when I delegate, it's not, it doesn't happen, but we're working on it.
I think that would be an, an ideal way for us to, uh, have more publicity, maybe working with Dr. Hiron. Something can come up where, you know, that, that there's a way for you all to be able, because a lot of wonderful things are happening and you're doing great things, but the world needs to know about them. You know, we need to, you need to tell your story and, and I think that would be a great way to get it out there in addition to, you know, the anxiety and things that happen when you're taking the finals and all that.
Yeah.
That would be fun to see.
I do agree. And we are putting effort to increasing, like I said, our following and increasing, um, participation in social media and trying to get the students to engage with us. Because we have the pages, but students don't engage with us and it's hard enough to try to get them to talk to us in person. Um, so we're definitely struggling with that. Um, but.
Just so you know, President Sarata is a Twitter.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he told us. Um, uh, any other questions? I think that's the last slide. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chau, um, Ms. Portier. What are you majoring in and when do you have time to study?
I am a, a speech communications major and a psychology major. Yay. And I study late at night. So I'm hiding the bags under my ass currently under a lot of concealer. Yes.
Thank you very much for your leadership, um, and for being so active this year. And every year you all are, do great work for the community, for the college, and, um, this is no exception. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to add one more thing.
Oh, sure.
Um, before I, I conclude, I just wanted to express a kind of a grievance that we have felt as a group this semester. Uh, we recognize this is a great time of change for the college and a lot of times, I mean, it's a chance to improve and to expand our, the reach of our institution. And it is my wish that moving forward, we put more value on our student input and participation. Students are the lifeline of the college and we are those who will be affected by the changes in policies. We're those who are going to be the ones that enjoy the new facilities. And in the long run, we're going to be the ones that are going to be making our communities a better place. So when it comes to decisions like getting rid of the soccer field or the handball courts, the construction of new buildings, um, policies that are coming into effect or other activities that take place during the, uh, take place, we, we don't appreciate being considered as a second thought or like an afterthought after decisions have been made. So in my opinion, students bring a fresh outlook on a number of subjects. And though we may not have the same education or expertise as you all do, we, I believe that students know best what students need. Um, we hope that as administration you will put forward a greater effort to include students in these monumental decisions as we move forward. And that is all I have to say. Um, anything else?
No, thank you for that overview.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful holiday. Merry Christmas.
You too.
Item one point seven point eight, optional presentations will be made by the president's, oh, I'm sorry. Item one point eight, communications none. Item one point nine, Board of Trustee Business. Item one point nine point one, the Board of Trustees will discuss and deliberate on appointing members to serve on the Legal Counsel Committee.
I'd, I'd like to postpone that to January, please.
Second. Nobody here.
Yeah.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Item one point ten, Board Reports. Item one point ten point one, Treasuries Report, August thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. No action is necessary. Item one point ten point two, President's Report. Item one point ten point two point one, Dr. Sarata will update the Board of Trustees and Audience on recent events that have transpired at the college.
Chair Fiero, members of the board, um, let me begin, um, by welcoming on behalf of the board as well as, as uh, myself and the rest of the college team, uh, welcome, uh, our new Vice President for Student Enrollment Services, Dr. Kenneth Gonzalez. Dr. Gonzalez, we look forward to working with you. Thank you for being here. Uh, at, uh, Dr. Gonzalez comes to us absolutely. Um, from a wealth of experience, um, not only in California, in the San Diego area of California, but also here in Texas and has, um, been a national leader with regards to achieving the dream as a data coach, uh, for the Achieving the Dream, uh, Student Success Initiative, but founded by the Lumina Foundation and others, a real focus on student success. I know that I and the rest of the team look forward to working with you and your leadership, uh, in ensuring and facilitating student success. So welcome on behalf of the board and all of the rest of the team. I attended the Texas Association of Community College Legislative Committee this week. Um, very transparent with everyone, uh, faculty, staff, administrators, the board. Right now we're looking at a six point eight billion dollar deficit for the two thousand nineteen session. Um, so we will continue to work and develop our priorities at the Texas Association of Community Colleges. We as, uh, the board and I will work with our local delegation to ensure, uh, beginning in the spring semester chair that they understand what our, um, what our priorities are, uh, meet as we did two years ago with any and all constituents, um, from city council members, county, um, again, obviously our local delegation. But it is going to be, um, by all accounts, a very tough session. Uh, and so we need to be prepared and, and begin to work on that. Uh, I was fortunate to serve as a panelist at the Minority Serving Institution Convening of Aspiring Leaders Forum at the University of Pennsylvania. Um, in addition, attended the AACC Board Meeting, uh, last month. The SAC COC Conference was held December third through the fifth. Uh, uh, would very proud and, and pleased to note to the board, uh, that we are heading into our fifth year report. Um, and at this particular council, we met with our new vice, Vice President, Dr. Baird, who informed us that we had no further action needed from the institution with regards to substantive change. Uh, would like to thank all involved, in particular, Dr. Pendley for leading that effort and her staff, uh, Mary Beth Hahn, among others. But thank you for all the efforts. Um, the board held, uh, was in attendance rather at our commencement, which was held on December the eighth, uh, two thousand seventeen at the Don Haskins Center. This year's guest speaker was Mr. Rick Francis. Approximately twenty-two hundred graduates crossed or were awarded degrees and certificates with about eight hundred that crossed the stage. I know that Mr. Ebert and his team have a short video to display.
Today we honor over twenty-two hundred graduates, including many from our twelve early college high schools. I also ask that today and every day, we acknowledge and be thankful for the many gifts bestowed upon us, including the gift of intellect, goals met, the support of family and friends, mentors, and a society that encourages education.
I encourage you to take your skills in education and start building a foundation. And if you're so inclined, consider owning your own business. What this means for new graduates like yourselves is to begin to gain an experience in the workforce today, while at the same time to start saving for the day where you can be the boss, where you can create jobs and economic opportunity for others.
Thank you, Mr. Ebert, you and your team, Dr. Hiron and the team for producing a wonderful video. That's what we all work for. Certainly appreciate that. Thank you. Um, the Mellon Foundation has approved a grant of just over two million dollars, um, to, uh, working with the University of Texas at El Paso and EPCC. Uh, we will be, the college directly will receive over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support the streamlining of humanities transfers and collaboration between humanities faculty at UTEP and EPCC. Um, kudos to Ms. Margie Nelson Rodriguez, Brian Kirby and Dean, uh, Primazic for all the work that they did in leading that effort, many involved, but very, very pleased to receive a grant from the Mellon Foundation. Our longest-standing early college high school principal, Mr. Paul Covey, was awarded the Terrell H. Bell Award for Outstanding School Leadership from the U.S. Department of Education. Principal Covey has led the four hundred student vivendiary college high school since two thousand nine. He is one of only eight principals in the nation and the only principal in the state of Texas to be recognized with this award for serving as outstanding, as an outstanding school leader. Congratulations on winning this prestigious leadership award, Mr. Covey. Uh, proud to announce that, uh, from a competitive field of twenty-eight Texas community colleges, El Paso Community College was recently selected as the two thousand seventeen Math Pathways Overall Exemplar, awarded by the Texas Association of Community Colleges. Five colleges were recognized with EPCC being the only one selected to receive the overall exemplar award. Math Pathway Exemplar Awards recognize colleges that have made significant progress implementing at scale the four Math Pathways Principals. Congratulations to the math discipline and to the Math Pathways Team, uh, Ivette Chuka, Lucy Michael, Oscar Velazquez, Cynthia Aguilar, Lucia Rodriguez, Kristi Frescas, Dela Truman and Dean's Rick Webb and Joshua Villalobos. Here's the award. It is heavy. Careful, Chair. Um, that was totally unexpected. Kudos to the team for how much effort they've put into that. El Paso Community College chefs and culinary arts program students participated in the Progress Three Two One First Annual One Region One Table Fundraising Event. On October fourteenth, guests enjoyed a five-course meal prepared by chefs from El Paso, Juarez and Las Cruces. The proceeds helped Progress Three Two One continue its mission of driving initiatives that have a positive and sustainable impact on our region. Thank you to the EPC students that participated as well as Chef Flugo, Chef Daniel Guerra, Chef Jonathan Nickerson, uh, Chef Guillermo Trejo and Dean Richard Webb for the great work showcasing our EPCC talent. EPCC Physics Professor John Ogan collaborated on a STEAM project with Brock Morrow, uh, Las Cruces artists, um, and Rhonda Taylor, the MS, NMSU Music Professor by presenting at the Jewel Box Series on October the eighth at the Philanthropy Theater. The performance Earth, Earth Oral Rover One Project featured a composition of recorded sounds from nature played from a solar-powered rover constructed out of musical instruments. The rover, inspired by NASA's Mars Rover, is the size of a small, of a smart car that has traveled the U.S. recording sounds from remote areas and state and national parks. Congratulations Professor, Professor Ogan on a great performance. Dean Webb for your support. Uh, the El Paso Community College Rise to the Challenge Program student Zaira Dorado received an award at the Annual Biomedical Research Conference for Minority Students in Chemistry. Sophomore category for her presentation entitled Use of Synthesized Nanoparticles to Remove Arsenic from Water. The STEM Conference, one of the largest in the U.S., was held in Phoenix, Arizona in November. Several other students also presented at this conference. Congratulations to Zaira Dorado and her mentor, Dr. Karina Castillo, EPCC Chemistry Professor. Special thanks to mentors Miguel Aguilar, Biology Professor, Dr. Maria Alvarez, Rise to the Challenge Program Coordinator and Biology Professor, as well as to Dean Webb. On November sixteenth, the Small Business Development Center hosted business and government leaders from Afghanistan who were visiting as part of the U.S. Department of State's International Leadership Program. We were well represented by EPCC Board Chair Fiero, Small Business Development Director Joe Ferguson and Business Development Advisor Arturo Anchando, uh, who met with these leaders to share best practices for economic and small business development. Thank you, Chair Fiero, for your time and continued support for the institution. And thank you, Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Anchando, for the great work, uh, and services you provide for our community at the Small Business Development Center. The Texas Department of State Health Services recently conducted an audit of the Emergency Medical Technology Program Course Records. The outcome was succe- successful with no deficiencies. Kudo to the program faculty and staff and special thanks to Mr. Tony Ayu, Program Coordinator and to Dr. Paula Mitchell for the great job. The Commission on Accreditation and Physical Therapy Education reviewed the compliance report of the Physical Therapies, Therapist Assistant Program at their October twenty seventeen meeting. The commission decision was to continue program accreditation through twenty twenty-six. For the next study and an onsite visit, there were no recommendations cited. Congratulations, Dr. Deborah Tommaselli Brock, Program Coordinator, Michelle Bernaki, Clinical Coordinator, Rhonda Hefner, our Physical Therapist Assistant Instructor. Special thanks to the adjunct faculty, students, and again, Dr. Paula Mitchell, who also played a key role in the successful, uh, outcome. Uh, Mr. Vice President Smith and his team, congratulations and kudos. That concludes my report, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Sarata. The only thing I think we left out was, um, how Mr. Francis matched.
Well said, Chair. So, um, it, Mr. Francis said that there's rare occasion that he is surprised. Um, in our invitation, we had spelled that out. I'm sure, um, he, it, it slipped his memory. But, uh, by awarding him the honorary associate's degree and establishing a scholarship in his name, uh, he immediately asked if he could, uh, speak again and at that time committed to doubling, um, and, and donating twenty-five thousand dollars to the scholarship program. So Mr. Francis was a great friend to the institution and we certainly thank his generosity.
Thank you, Dr. Sarata. Great report.
Item one point one one, Consent Docket. That includes items three point two and eight point one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item three point one, Full-Time Institutionally Funded Actions.
Motion to approve item three point one and item three point two.
Second.
Any questions?
Item three point, item three point two is on the consent document.
It says.
Yeah.
Okay.
Item 4.4, consideration and deliberation on the approval to award a three-year contract to Adams &amp; Ellis Doing Business as Subway, the Basil Garden LLC, Tazza's on Solid Grounds LLC, and El Portal de Osiros Restaurant to provide onsite food services on a concession basis at the Valle Verde, Rio Grande, Trans Mountain, Mission del Paso, and Northwest campuses.
Motion to approve. Second.
Questions?
None.
Thank you, Pam.
But I can just afford to comment at this point.
Absolutely, Mr. Uxser.
Dr. Sarata, you and I have talked at length about the concept of hunger versus learning here at, in, in the town and in the community, and we look around there, and I know that we've made, we've made some efforts there. I'd like to see us maybe, probably, I'd like to see us investigate, if you will, the idea of doing a survey. Let's find out to what degree we have. It doesn't do us a lot of good to lose talent and academic ability because they're hungry. Okay, so let's, I'd like to see some, maybe a survey, something to quantify. And I will report this, I, I think we need to, to give a lot of credit to President Portillo and their efforts as student government. They've identified that and they've got a small effort, well, not small, but a regional effort or localized effort at Valle Verde. It's going, not going to be, we can't, we can't pattern that at every school because each one is different then, so that's going to be problems. We're going to have problem with locality and, and everything else, but I think we need to define what we have here and let's, let's see if we can't get something that. And in the spirit of President Portillo's speech, I really think that probably somebody from SGA should be included in this effort so that they, they've got experience in that at their level. So let's, let's see if we can't put a little bit more effort in trying to keep people learning.
Note it, Mr. Uxser, we will move forward with that and, and report back to the board in the spring semester.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 5.1, consideration and deliberation on the approval of a contract to Delmar Contracting Incorporated for the modification of the existing secondary access road to the Mission del Paso campus in the amount not to exceed $448,500.
Motion to approve 5.1 and 6.1. Second.
Item 6.1, consideration and deliberation on the approval to enter into a service agreement with the National Center for Inquiry and Improvement LLC for participation in the A212 Improvement Cohort Number Two from January 1, 2018 through June 30, 2020 in the amount not to exceed $145,000.
Questions? Thank you, Pam.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 6.2, consideration and deliberation on the acceptance of a grant award from the National Institutes of Health in the amount of $327,501.
Motion to approve 6.2 and 6.3.
Second.
Item 6.3, consideration and deliberation on the acceptance of a grant award from the Texas Workforce Commission in the amount of $131,299.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Pam.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 6.4, consideration and deliberation on the approval of the purchase of an AA4 floor rail system for the radiology program from Mary X-Ray Source One Healthcare in the amount not to exceed $69,855.
Motion to approve 6.4 and 6.5.
Second.
Item 6.5, consideration and deliberation on the approval of the restated and amended Trans Mountain Early College High School interlocal agreement between El Paso County Community College District and the El Paso Independent School District.
Any questions? Get ready, Pam.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 6.2, consideration and deliberation on the acceptance of a grant award from the National Institutes of Health in the amount of $327,501.
Motion to approve 6.2 and 6.3.
Second.
Item 6.3, consideration and deliberation on the acceptance of a grant award from the Texas Workforce Commission in the amount of $131,299.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Pam.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 6.4, consideration and deliberation on the approval of the purchase of an AA4 floor rail system for the radiology program from Mary X-Ray Source One Healthcare in the amount not to exceed $69,855.
Motion to approve 6.4 and 6.5.
Second.
Item 6.5, consideration and deliberation on the approval of the restated and amended Trans Mountain Early College High School interlocal agreement between El Paso County Community College District and the El Paso Independent School District.
Any questions? Get ready, Pam.
Mr. Uxser.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Mr. Fierro.
Aye.
Item 9.0, unfinished business.
No, executive, please.
The board of trustees may conduct an executive or closed session presented to the chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. Consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation or for any purpose authorized by law. Discussion about the value or transfer of real property. Discussion about a prospective gift or donation. Consideration of specific personnel matters. Discussion about security, personnel or devices, or discussion of certain economic development matters. The board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda if the subject matter is permitted for a closed session by provisions of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session. Okay, the time is 7:32 PM and the board is in regular session.
Motion, our next meeting is scheduled for January 25th at 5:00 PM. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Pam.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor.